Item C is a public hearing on the expansion of the redevelopment district and the modification of the project plan for Heartland Park. I ask Mr. Coulson to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to just maybe make a couple of brief comments in advance of the public hearing, and we understand that this will be held addressed in the following two items. So, over the last nine months, the city has been working cooperatively with several bodies, including the Department of Commerce and Jayhawk Racing and other entities who had a business or interest in the activities at Heartland Park or the funds related to it. Specifically, we've been discussing amending the current star bond plan and district to ensure the future viability of Heartland Park and to address the current debt service, which is a serious concern of the city. Tonight, we're presenting to you a plan that will put the city in the best possible position to deal with not in addition to the debt service requirements that the city has looking forward for the next 12 years, but we also believe to reestablish and enhance the viability of Heartland Park, both as a racing facility, but also as an entertainment facility, recognizing that it has 700 acres and could be used very aggressively to promote economic development within the city. The expansion of the district allows the city to use the state's portion of sales tax to meet the ongoing debt services associated with Heartland Park. So, I think it's very important to say this, there is no increase in taxes associated with anything that we're doing or anything that has been done at Heartland Park and with the star bond district. It is a redeployment of those existing funds that would be paid on any sale within the city, just based on our existing tax code. There is no increase in sales taxes associated with this. Additionally, this action will allow the city to control the future ownership and operations and management of Heartland Park as a world-class facility. As discussed, our plan is to look for an owner and, in worst-case scenario, to find an operator to manage this facility. The key thing is never to put the city in a situation where it had unmanageable financial risks associated with it. Over the past three months, we've met with a number of sanctioning bodies, including the National Hot Rod Association, the Porsche Club, the BMW Club, the National Autosports Association, all who have expressed their support for seeing continued operation. I look in the audience and see several members of those groups here and anticipate that they'll have something to say, but there is a commitment by a wide body of people who have an interest in the activities of Heartland Park to see this project go forward. At this point, I'd ask if, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, if I could allow Chad to maybe provide just a quick summary of the ordinance itself and how we would go forward.
Yes, I say, Mr. Sublet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I would ask Susie Gilbert to come up and assist me with the map that we have. The plan before you would accomplish two goals. One would be to acquire property, which is Heartland Park and the land associated with Heartland Park. The second would be an expansion of the district, and those are the two pieces that this plan Some people have proposed as a new star bond issue. It's not a new issue. It's an amendment of the current plan that would allow us to, again, acquire Heartland Park and the property associated with it and expand the district. The map that's before you, the yellow area is the current district, and many of you are familiar with that. There were several maps that have been put forward. And then, if we move up, the blue area would be the expanded district, essentially goes up to Peak Boulevard to Croy and takes in all those businesses. So, again, the plan is to acquire real property, which would be Heartland Park and the area associated with that, for given encumbrances, and to expand the district. This works much better on my computer than--
It really did. Just keep talking, I'll figure it out.
All right. An expansion of the district, we've talked about this before, that it would generate about $16.4 million in additional revenue to pay off the current debt associated with Heartland Park and any new debt that would be issued. The new debt would be approximately $5 million. We can't say today that it is $5.2 million because the encumbrances, there are different fees associated with those and interest rates per day. At the point, if this body were to move forward and issue bonds, you would have the exact number and exactly what encumbrances that would pay off. That's why, in your ordinance, this has estimated at $5 million. We're pretty certain it's going to be that $5 million number. The ordinance, which is next, it does not issue bonds. You're not issuing bonds. All you're doing is asking the secretary for the authority to issue bonds, if that's what you wanted to do, to acquire the property at a later date. Essentially, what we're doing is asking you to approve the project plan, which is acquisition of real property and the expansion of the district. Then, it will go to a 60-day protest period to see if there's a protest to it, and then the bond issue will be revisited after that point. And at this point, I would ask Mr. Gerber if he could just talk a little bit about the financials as it's related to the expanded district.
Mr. Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think City Attorney Sublet really highlighted the key point that I would want to make, and that is that $16.4 million number. I think, as the council is aware, as the district stands now, the amount of revenue generated does not come close to meeting our obligations, our debt service obligations, and so we're having to essentially run that through our debt service fund, but we're not having-- we're having the expenditure, but we're not having the revenue to meet those needs. If we expand the district, indeed, we will generate that additional $16.4 million in additional revenue, and that will provide a net gain to the city of approximately $8.8 million. So, the net result of this, by expanding the district, we will allow ourselves to see a net gain, all things being equal, the assumptions we made, the district exists the way it is, sales tax stays the same, a moderate 1% growth rate. If we see those things, then we would generate $8.8 million to the good for the city at the end of the process.
So, per statute, that would complete staff presentation on what the project is, the project plan is, and statutorily, we would move to the public hearing.
Yes, we will then proceed with the public hearing. We'll announce that the public hearing is now open. We have had a number of individuals who signed up to speak, and also, after this, you may also speak in a public hearing if you have not signed up in advance. The first person is Deb Strom.
My name is George Solovsky.
Okay, you are also signed up, so we'll say Deb Strom is not speaking. Number two is George Solovsky.
My first question would be, why do we need you? We're doing really well where we're at. Our road services are good, our sewer services are good, our water services are good. Why do we need to contribute to your needs?
Well, in the public comment, we want you to share your views, your thoughts about the issue before us. If you have specific information that we can request, that we can provide, we will do that.
Okay. I represent Deborah Hill Strom, who lives at 5720 Southwest Peak Boulevard. She also owns and operates Edwards Retail Liquor Store. She has a personal residence and has Sassy Properties that are encompassed by this event. Again, my question is, why do we need you? We have been contributors to Heartland Park for a long time. Anybody that walks up to our door sees our sticker, says we are contributors of Heartland Park to Peak, have been for a long, long time. Two owners of Heartland Park to Peak have fallen aback, okay? The star bonds have fallen aback. Why do we want to continue to support this? Heartland Park has been a good thing for Topeka with the retail system, whether it be food, liquor, or, you know, your lodging and everything. Yeah, it's a good thing. It's a fantastic thing. But why put this bag of rocks on our back? You know, why create a corridor that will supplement this in order for you to make this purchase and see this through? What are we going to get out of it? What do we hope to see out of it? There's a lot of business properties involved here, not just us, we're just a speck, but it's going to drive some people off, it really will. We've had some conversations with some people, and they're not big on it. I support Heartland Park. I've been there as a volunteer, a stone-cold volunteer. I've been a volunteer through my church, and I realize my time's about up. Been a volunteer through my church, been a volunteer through Boy Scouts. I've been a participant of just going to the track, and I just, I have a hard time seeing it, seeing it happen when everybody's tripping over the curb. So, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate your comments.
And we're just looking out for ourselves. What have we got to gain?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next is Ryan Staub.
Hello? I'm Ryan Staub with the Kansas City BMW Club, and we are a 75,000-member organization. The Kansas City chapter represents about 750 driving enthusiasts in the Kansas City area. We have been putting out events at Heartland Park since, well, just over 20 years. On average, our events bring out about 100 different participants, and this is, you know, one three-day weekend, so we're only talking about one event on one part of the racetrack. There's the road course facility, the drag strip, and the dirt track. So, you know, our members absolutely love this. It's kind of the highlight of the year, as far as events that we put on, you know, what it means to Topeka. You know, just coming up with some rough numbers, our 100 participants represent about 300 nights in hotel rooms, 850 meals at Topeka restaurants, 3,000 gallons of fuel purchased at Topeka gas stations. In my business, I work with racetracks throughout the country and have seen some of the best and some of the worst, and I truly think Heartland Park is a world-class facility. Having a road course racetrack, a dirt track, and a drag strip all in one location is pretty unique. The track itself, the layout, is absolutely fantastic. The facilities are absolutely world-class as well, and, you know, the future for the BMW Club, we absolutely plan to support Heartland Park for years to come, and I think there's, you know, potential to even bring in national events for us. We're big supporters of the track and hope to see it survive and thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Wayman.
My name is Robert Wayman, and I'm the president of the Kansas City Region of the Porsche Club of America. The Porsche Club of America is the largest single-mark car club in the world, with more than 106,000 members in 141 regions across the country. I am here representing more than 700 members of the Kansas City Region. I am also an avid track event participant. I participate in between 10 and 12 track events a year throughout the Midwest, and have done so for the past eight or nine years. The Porsche Club of America operates both a performance driving education program and a racing program on a national basis. In 2013, more than 22,000 PCA members participated in one or more of those events. Since 2001, our club has organized more than 25 events, multiple-day events, at Heartland Park, drawing more than 2,500 participants and their guests to Topeka from a seven-state region. Heartland Park is one of the most challenging and exciting road courses in the Midwest, and I speak from personal experience, because I've driven them off. And the facilities there, as Ryan mentioned, are absolutely second to none. We believe that a reinvigorated Heartland Park will once again become the destination of choice in the Midwest for track enthusiasts of all levels and for multiple sanctioning organizations. The Kansas City Region of the PCA fully supports and commends the action contemplated by the city council to improve the operation of Heartland Park, and our members look forward very much to planning and attending a number of events in Topeka in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stacy Prim.
Hi, my name is Stacy Prim, and I live at 5813 Southeast Lake Drive. I was never made aware of any of this. I was never mailed any notifications, and then this here, it says that everybody was to be mailed a copy of the redevelopment, annex zoning, whatever you want to call it. To me, last year, the city of Topeka tried purchasing all the ground that Mars could use with whose budget? The taxpayers' budget. I already see the roadways failing off Gary Ormsby Drive, around the racetrack. None of the roads are taken care of. You've got tons of water leaks in the city of Topeka. Well, you keep expanding and building out. How are you going to take care of all that stuff? You can't do it now. How are you going to do it later? I heard somebody say, oh, well, you know, we might get $5 million. Somebody else said, oh, we might get $8 million. What's it going to cost you to expand the Topeka Township to take care of the roads? The police department? I mean, what are you guys going to do? Where's the money going to come from? And you say you're not going to raise taxes, but I want to know, whose money? Where are we getting this money tree at? I don't understand. I don't want to be in the city. That's the whole reason I live where I live. I live in the county, and it just upsets me that you guys keep wanting to take, 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 when you've got all this other ground. The Heartland Racetrack should have been zoned into the city to begin with, and it's not. It doesn't even touch none of the city boundaries. I don't know how they got to build it out there anyway and be owned by the city. I mean, a lot of this just upsets me. You guys got tons of ground everywhere, and it's not being utilized. It's like a waste of money. I'm just, I'm just really upset about it. And like I said, I don't want to be zoned in there. I don't want to be a part of the city limits. Whoever designed Heartland Racetrack to begin with shouldn't have built a dirt track. They should have built a regular racetrack. You know, I see Thunder Hill probably does better than out there at Heartland Park. It's just very upsetting, and I want to know where the money's going to come from. I want to make sure I don't get zoned in. I want to stay in the county. I don't want to be in the city, and I want to make, I want one of you guys, whoever's doing this, to tell me if we're getting zoned in, annexed in, or how it's going to work, because I don't want to be in the city of Topeka. So, thank you for your time.
Let us just make a couple of comments to, first of all, Heartland Park is in the city.
I understand that, but--
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you said it wasn't.
No, it is, but my understanding is, I know the city has that property, but how can it be out there and not be touching the city boundaries? That's the question.
State law allows cities, you do not have to be contiguous.
Okay.
You can have areas of the city not connected to the city.
Okay.
Secondly, there is no plan to expand the Heartland Park area, the area that it has right now. We are expanding the area where the tax is collected.
Right.
The area that, and that is what was shown on the map--
Right.
--is going up to Peak Boulevard into the city.
And see, we're in that. We're this little tiny housing section right behind John's Grocery Store in Pauline, right off of 57th Street.
But there will be no increase in the taxes. There will just, the sales tax collected in that area now will help to pay for Heartland Park.
I don't--
It will not be increased.
I understand that, but I don't want to be in the city.
But you will not be in the city. Nothing of that area where we're expanding the tax is not to be annexed, is not to be a part of the city.
Well, then, why--
The county will--
--would we have to lose--
Excuse me, just, the county has to approve that we will do this, but you remain in the county. There is no plan to annex any area that is not currently in the city. The sales tax that is collected in that area will use to go pay for Heartland Park. And I, City Manager, would you want to add or someone add any other corrections? So, we're, we make it as clear as we can.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has no impact on you, absolutely none. You're not going to be annexed in the city. It doesn't, it doesn't impact anything that you're doing. All of the sales taxes that were being discussed to be included in the district are already being paid. It's just a redeployment, a reallocation of those funds, as opposed to being collected by the state. They're being collected and used to retire the debt for the city. I know it has no impact on you at all, other than you'll see Heartland Park become enhanced and more economic activity on the streets, but in terms of impacting where you live, what taxes you pay, it has no impact on you.
But it affects my roadways. It affects my transportation. Have you guys been on South Topeka Boulevard? Have you seen how horrible it is? I mean, the water floods the roads, so literally, when you're going to work, you've got to be careful if a big truck goes by. I mean, these are things that, how are you guys going to take care of all this? Do you want to expand it down there and stuff? Where's that money going to come from? Where's that money going to come from? Okay? I know you're going to make Heartland Park work and stuff, but you've got to make the stuff around it work, too.
Mr. Mayor, if I may--
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Okay, so hopefully, this will wrap us up, and if we want to talk later, we certainly can. There's nothing happening that changes the responsibility of roads and everything else. We're not expanding the city. We're not taking on additional responsibility to do road work or to add police. Everything that's currently in place and placed, but I'm happy to talk to you about it. I'm just telling you that this is--
I understand what you're saying, that you're just using the money. You're just using the money, so it's not going to affect our township, our funds, our roads, and all that.
It has no, it has zero impact on you. Everything that you've brought up is not being impacted by this activity.
Okay.
But I'm happy to meet with you and talk, if you would like to.
The responsibility for the roads continues. I think that area south of, I believe, 47th Street or 59th Street is not in the city, so the city is not responsible for that part of the highway.
Well, but they were responsible for Gary Ormsby Drive, and it's horrid. You know, that is a city road. They were to take care of Adams, 85th and Adams and stuff, and it's horrid.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's, that's the question, you know?
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next is Joseph Ledbetter.
I have a number of concerns I want to place on the record, and I was incorrectly put as being in favor of this at the last meeting they had, and I'm not. I'm not really against it, but I certainly, I doubt I would vote for it if I had a vote tonight, but, and I don't, but I do have a number of concerns. I'm going to try to get through these very rapidly. I went back and looked at the minutes of September 27th, '05, October 25th of '05, and December 6th of '05, and one of the concerns I had was the minimal discussion by politicians, you know, questioning how these bonds are going to work. I was concerned when I looked back at, it looked like everybody was voting for it, and all those people are gone, except Ms. Ortiz and Mr. Harmon, but I didn't see discussion. I saw reports, I saw guarantees, I saw everybody saying that the current boundaries are going to work, and we know they didn't. Now, we're currently seeing basically a system failure in these star bonds, and so it did not work. In fact, I'm going to read from December 6th of 2005. Neil Dobler, City Manager, stated the district, as was previously approved, and now working, considering the project plan. He stated, "He believes this is a good project for Heartland Park and the city." He did note that, in the event that the revenue from the sales tax did not cover the bonds, the city would have to make up the difference. I hope you, again, repeat that tonight. I filed a QRA on the 7th, and I asked for more information about the amount of money we've spent on Heartland Park, and I'm going to pass this out. I don't know that you guys have this. Excuse me. This is a copy of the bed tax that Heartland Park's been given, and one of the years, 2009, they were given almost $400,000. I wonder if that money was actually spent on marketing over all these years and why we're now at a place where the park doesn't seem to be working. I then got some further information that said we had spent $6 million in GO bonds on Heartland Park, and I was not aware of that. So, in addition to the $10.5 million in star bonds, we've spent, the city has spent another $6 million in general obligation bonds. And then, on the report they gave me, as of August 31st of 2013, the city has had to supplement the debt service payments to Heartland Park star bonds by approximately $2 million. That concerns me, because I think about how public decisions are made and how the thinking process works up here, and too often, and I'm an observer, I realize, I see you people just rush, 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 approve, approve, approve. I never see the tough questions I'd like to see, almost never. I never see the research that I'd like to see about all the money that's been spent, and I'm calculating about $21.5 million already just spent under the present administration of Mr. Urban. Now, that's a lot of money. I'm also, I'd like to ask for an extension.
Is there--
Motion to extend.
Mr. Lee's law? Mr. Mad Speaker moves Mr. Lee's law seconds to extend for approximately--
Four minutes.
Four minutes. Those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, please continue for four minutes.
Thank you. The, this, this is a huge amount of money that was spent on this project, this raceway. Now, my next file here. I was looking at today's information and the report that I, you know, went in and got a copy of from the clerk's office. It looks like we could be asking for another $6 million in bonds tonight, or up to $6 million. I was reading through the report, and on page three of four, amended project plan, it says that we will be spending at least $5 million for reversionary interest in the real estate the city wants to acquire, and there's going to be $5 million spent to acquire that reversionary interest. Now, reversionary interest is not fee simple, and so what are you really buying? There are appraisals to do to figure out what reversionary interest is valued at, and I would like to see that done. Before, we asked the city taxpayers to fork over $5 million for reversionary interest. I'd like to see that appraised by three independent appraisers. That's what they do in condemnations and eminent domains, and I think it would be very prudent and wise to find out what we're really buying. How is that being valued? Another thing of interest, I, on the map, and this is just kind of a side note, I noticed that it took in White Lakes, and I don't know what revenue you're going to get off that, but I thought that was curious. The next question I've got is about the future. Who's going to run this? Because I don't want a city department created to run Heartland Park or a raceway. Because I don't want a city department created to run Heartland Park or a raceway, and I have, I've watched, I've shaken my head at how Jado runs its operation, doesn't seem to be able to oversee the money with any kind of transparency. I look at how it took eight years to straighten out a very small zoo, and I'm not blaming the current management, but I've watched this city. I saw five years where we could not fix the streets, no matter what we did, till we finally got rid of a manager that evidently didn't know how to fix streets, but it took five years. I don't want that kind of process at Heartland Park. If you do buy this, and I'm not saying I'm for that, but if you do acquire this, then who's going to run it? So what is the plan? I'd like to hear that tonight on the record. What is the, the game plan to keep the city from operating this? And then what guarantees do we have that tonight, these, any new bonds for this reversionary interest are going to actually be successful? Are we going to be back here in another five or six years, reading the record, seeing who voted for it, seeing if there was any discussion, seeing if any tough questions were asked, and are we going to have yet another system failure? I don't want that to happen, but I simply have seen enough around Topeka when it comes to government, both city and county, that I have a lot of questions about these kinds of ideas, and I think they deserve a lot of time and a lot of scrutiny, and you shouldn't rush into these things. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Long. Is Kelly Long here? Not seeing Kelly. The next speaker is Kurt Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kurt Young, and I live at sixty-two ten Southeast Sixty-First Street, Tecumseh, Kansas. I currently own a hotel located within the proposed sales tax district, and am currently the president of the Topeka Lodging Association. I have a long history of personal and public support for Heartland Park, as it plays an integral part in the success of my hotel, and in addition, provides many lodging room nights throughout the year to all of the lodging properties in Topeka. It would be easy for the critics to say that my support for this proposal is self-centered, since I benefit directly from the events that take place at Heartland Park. Let me assure you that as president of the Topeka Lodging Association, I can attest to the fact that every hotel in Topeka benefits from the presence of Heartland Park as well as the community as a whole. There is a common misconception within the public sector that Heartland Park is basically a single-event venue. Everyone can relate to the Kansas National NHRA event that takes place there every May, but very few people seem to understand the significance of the many other events that take place throughout the year. Recently, I had the pleasure of participating in a series of branding meetings conducted by a national firm, and as we discussed various events that take place in Topeka, I was shocked by the number of people involved that had no idea of some of the events that were taking place at Heartland Park. You have heard tonight from some of those clients that utilized this fili, facility, not just once a year, but in some cases, several times a year. They are spending their discretionary money here in Topeka for fuel, dining, lodging, and other necessities as needed. I would venture to say that every business on South Topeka Boulevard, as well as the city as a whole, benefits immensely from events that take place at Heartland Park. Heartland Park is a very valuable asset to the Topeka, Shawnee County, and the state of Kansas' travel and tourism market. This is obviously demonstrated by the fact that, that the state has indicated a willingness to establish the new proposed sales tax district. I doubt this would even be considered by the state if there was no recognition of the overall financial benefit that Heartland Park provides to our community and the state. Every effort should be made to not only support this venue, but to continue to look for ways to maximize the type and number of events that can be held there. The overall financial impact that this venue has on Topeka and Shawnee County is substantial and should be protected. I wholeheartedly ask that you support this resolution and these actions tonight. I'll stand for any questions.
Other questions for Mr. Young? Seeing none, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Rick Taylor.
Hi, my name's Rick Taylor. I'm a longtime member of the Local Sports Car Club, the local chapter, and we have run many, many events out of Heartland Park over the years, twenty-six, twenty-seven years, whatever. We have a large event coming in the end of this month that'll have probably eighty teams, but it isn't, it isn't just like the number of cars, it's how many people come with it, up to a dozen, you know, per car. Again, you get the room rentals, the restaurant business, and everything else. The health of the track is very important to us, but every other organization that uses it, but I would also think it's very important to the city of Topeka. It's been there now for twenty-six at least years. It was voted upon by the public back then to spend, I think it was back then, seven million dollars to build the track. And then the O'Shaughnessy family came up from Wichita and spent at least three times that amount in finishing the project. So there are many, many millions of dollars out there in investment. Whatever the city chooses to do is a minimal investment in the total value of the whole system. So I hope you can see the long-term, as it has been, benefit of the track for the city of Topeka. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the list of persons who signed up to speak. Are there other members here tonight who wish to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, we will then declare the public hearing closed. We will proceed with Item D of the agenda, the ordinance for the Heartland Park Development District, if the clerk would read.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, adding additional area to the Heartland Park Redevelopment District, a major motorsports complex and redevelopment area, amending the Heartland Park Redevelopment Project Plan, and approving a request to the Secretary of Commerce for the authority to issue, issue additional sales tax and revenue star bonds in excess of the amount previously approved, all pursuant to KSA twelve seventeen one sixty at seek as amended.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you want to introduce additionally?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would, with your permission, ask Mr. Soblet to make some brief comments as we enter into this phase.
Mr. Soblet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I stated earlier, the ordinance before you would accomplish two goals. One would be for the, this body to approve the acquisition of property, which would be Heartland Park, and approval of the expanded district, and the authority to request authority from the Secretary of Commerce for approximately five million dollars in additional full faith and credit star bonds to acquire that property. Again, approval of this ordinance does not issue those bonds. That will have to come back before you, before those are issued. It just allows us to get that approval from the Department of Commerce, if that's how this body wants to move forward. And all of these, if you, if this ordinance were to pass tonight, it would have to go before the Department of Commerce, they would have to approve it as well, and then it would be back in front of, there'd be a sixty-day protest period, and then we'd be back in front of this body for any issuance of any bonds. I just wanted to address a few things that came up today in various emails that we received. There is a question about why we're using full faith and credit, why, why there's full faith and credit bonds, and it's basically marketability without full faith and credit bonds, according to our financial advisor and bond counsel. The bonds aren't marketable. Under the Moody's special tax criteria, the city has to show a history of roughly a dollar eighty, a dollar and eighty-five in revenue for every dollar spent if it's not a full faith and credit bond, so that affects the marketability. So that's why we would use full faith and credit bonds. It would also greatly impact the interest rate. So there was a question about, why are you doing it this way? That's why we're doing it that way. There is also questions about, basically, the legal compliance and the fifty percent test. Are those things being met? Secretary of Commerce is not going to sign off on this. If those are not met, you have to prove to the, to the Department of Commerce that fifty percent of the cost of the projects are coming outside of the issuance of bonds. We've done the preliminary financial analysis on that, believe that it will, those, that will continue to get refined over the next thirty, forty-five days, and Commerce and Bond Counsel will have to sign off on whether that test is met. Again, tonight's issue is simply, do we want to move forward with this? Do we want this to go forward for, for a, the sixty-day protest period? And then it would come back to you. The project plan, and Mr. Ledbetter brought this out, how are the bonds going to work? What are we doing with this bonds? In terms of star bond issues, this is a simple one. We're simply amending the plan to acquire property, and that's how the bonds would be, be used, that we would use those bonds to acquire Heartland Park and the land associated with it, and that is allowable use under the statute. So, and then, lastly, I just want to hit on again, this is not increasing taxes. This is simply using the state's portion of sales tax to repay the debt, and we've had this discussion a number of times on what that debt looks like. If we don't move forward, we're looking at an eight-million-dollar hole essentially on the debt that's currently owed. The projections, and the projections are based on real numbers provided to us by the state. These aren't somebody projecting what may happen. We looked at, what are the sales tax projections from the, this area? What are those going to look like? And that's what we use to look at repayment of the debt. It wasn't, you know, it needs to generate an additional twenty-five percent. We think it's going to, the revenues are going to increase four hundred percent over the next fifteen years. That's not what we did. It's not what our financial team did, what our financial advisors did, or what the Secretary did, as we looked at actual numbers, a history of performance in that district, and we took a conservative approach to that. I would stand for any questions or any inquiries at all.
And council members, are there questions for Mr. Soblet? Any of these issues? I'm sorry, Mr. Man Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, so the, the percentage of the sales tax that will repay the bond is only the state's portion of the sales tax? It wouldn't reduce our portion of the sales tax?
I would, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Governor. Do you want to respond to that?
I do. Mr. Man Speaker and Mr. Mayor, thank you. The city will be giving up the general fund portion of their sales tax to, as part of the sales tax from the district that will be used to finance this.
If I may.
Yes.
And what's a ballpark figure on that?
Uh, Mr. Man Speaker, Mr. Mayor, over the life of the bond issuance over the eleven years, we're estimating that we'll give up about one point six million.
One point six million?
Yes, which will be matched, basically, it'll be a ten-to-one match from the state. We'll be gaining approximately sixteen million dollars in revenue from the state in exchange for that piece that we may give up, that we will give up.
So what, what you're saying is that the revenue we generate, or we get back from the state is sixteen times, or you said ten times?
Ten times.
Okay. And so that would be revenue that we would not have received otherwise?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, and that's really a major benefit, is that we'll be receiving. Other questions? I had one on the, because you, you said the five million, and in the financial analysis, it is, it states it is anticipated the financing will be on a par value not to exceed six million. I know, and I, I think at times, we have used a six-million-figure. Do you want to speak to that?
We have.
That difference?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have taken a very, I would say, conservative approach to this. We believe it'll be in that five-million-dollar, close to that five-million-dollar number, but the preliminary indications are that we would be granted up to six million dollars. We don't know exactly if it's five-point-one or five-point-two, so we ran the numbers at six million to see, worst-case scenario, it's, which I don't think it's going to be, but if it was six million dollars, we would still be able to pay back that amount of debt over the life of the project. We wanted to take a very conservative approach and say, okay, worst-case scenario, it's six million dollars in new debt, what are we looking at over the life of this project? And we still repay our debt, even at that number.
And then, I, I think on that, the five or six million is to, for the purchase of the, of Heartland Park, and also it was to, to provide for some upgrades, some things that needed to be done.
It's, it's, it's just for purchase of Heartland Park and to deal with any of the encumbrances associated with Heartland Park.
And at one point, it was discussed that there might be some upgrades that are needed, but that will be funded separately then?
I think that's an ongoing issue that we're looking at at Heartland Park. We do know, when we met with the NHRA, they did analysis of the drag strip after the last race, and it was, it all came back positive, that there were a few minor issues that needed to be dealt with, but nothing major. The amenities, the information that we've gotten, is they're all in good shape. The only issue that may come up is the road course. There may be some things that need to be addressed, but those are all things I think we're going to look at as we look at new ownership and we look at a management company in the future. There's no intent to address some concerns, to create a Department of Racing within the city, that the intent is to find new ownership, find a management company.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were a lot of emails going back and forth, and there were some questions in some of those emails that were very, very interesting, and I know we haven't had time to respond to a lot of those emails, because they just came yesterday, but I do want assurance that, that people that we're hearing from in the community that, that went into depth in trying to put the questions forward, that those will be answered in the next sixty days, so that we, I mean, with that protest that we have. Well, one of the questions that, that sparked my curiosity was the operating costs and the racetrack improvements, are those that have not been done? Are those included in, how are we going, are those included in the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget? How is all that going to be covered?
The, the operating costs that have accumulated, that was in the workout agreement that we talked about earlier, there was three hundred thousand dollars approximately that was an additional loan made by Core First, that when the bonds are issued, that will be paid off to deal with any operating costs. And as I just talked about, the future issues that need to be dealt with at Heartland Park, we're working very quickly to identify a management company and an ownership group to deal with the road course that that needs to be dealt with. Again, all indications are the drag strip that we got, the report back from NHRA, that it's in good shape, the amenities are in good shape. The road, of course, may be the thing that we need to deal with in the future, or the future owner will have to deal with.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mrs. Heller?
If you could help clarify, I've had some questions on this. If we create this expanded district and then, and have the agreement with the Department of Commerce that the, their share of the taxes from that district would come to us, is that solely if there are bonds issued, or would we get that money anyway?
That, the two are going to be tied together. There's the acquisition of property and the expansion of the district. It's not, we can't pick and choose, that we will have to acquire the property through the issue, issuance of additional full faith and credit star bonds in combination with the expansion of the district. I guess I would say, we haven't been, we haven't had conversations, and we haven't been approached by Commerce that they're interested in just expanding the district, the two go hand in hand, that we acquire the property and expand the district.
So just to, to understand what happens with the money, let's say that the amount of tax revenue that is generated in that district is more than what is needed to pay off the bonds. What happens to the difference of that money?
It goes back to the, it goes back to the state.
They just keep it? They just keep it? Do they actually pay the bonds, or, okay, so it comes through us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good question. That's, did I take care of it? Are there other questions, council? What is your pleasure? Mr. Schmidt?
I just, for clarification, after listening to some of the public comments, this question is for the finance director. What is the total liability that the city faces from general obligation funds, were we not to expand the district and Heartland Park were to continue in its present state?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Schmidt, thank you. If we continue down the present path and did nothing, our liability would be approximately $8.1 million. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Comments? What is your pleasure? Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Schmidt moves to approve the ordinance on the Heartland Park Redevelopment District. Is there a second? Mrs. Everhart, seconds. We have one person who has signed to speak on this, Mr. Ledbetter. Okay, thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes, Mr. Man speaker voting no.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is passed, and I failed to say that this does require 2/3 of the voting of the governing body, so seven votes would be required.